Zoning bylaw review and planning board meeting of August 12th, 2020 to order. Our WebEx meeting link can be found on the agenda, which is on the homepage of the Planning Board, not Planning Board, the Town Calendar. And the meeting number is 129-143-8562, password 2020. You can also join by phone, 617-315-0704, with the same meeting number access code 129-143-8562. I believe we are streaming on BCAT as well, and this is recorded, and it is on BCAT, and will hopefully be shown again on BCAT if anyone misses the meeting or needs to leave early. As I mentioned, I want to go through with the meeting preview and go through as they're set up in that order, and call those who want to discuss each article. And then, really, again, tonight's the opening of a lot of these. Some of these, we've already started to discuss, such as short-term rentals, which we open with, but really, continue to get that list of questions, some of which we can answer tonight that came up at the last planning board meeting, as well as kind of continue to work through the specifics of the subject matter, as well as the language as we move forward. So, that's the agenda for tonight, so just really think of questions, comments. This is the beginning, let's just make a running list, so we can really begin to dig deeper after this meeting. We scheduled the meeting from 6:00 to 9:00. Hopefully, we don't need to go quite that long, but certainly take as much time as we need. And that's, that's that. Any questions? Nope? Okay. Okay, so, we start with the short-term rentals, which is the amending Article 2 to create a new definition for short-term rentals, as well as add to the use table in Article 4, for Principal Use Regulation Schedule, short-term rentals as 42133. We opened this at the last planning board meeting. There were a number of questions that came up, but I know a lot of it stemmed from a timely meeting, a meeting, a timely party at a certain house that was a short-term rental that got a lot of people excited in the neighborhood. Which, you know, that's, that's why we're doing all of this, the short-term rental, as the state defines, is, is really that. It's that you can't, you have a commercial enterprise within your neighborhood, and, you know, a commercial enterprise being you're renting your house out like it would be a hotel or other type of non-single-family use. So, we did submit this to May Town Meeting. It's gone through iterations of the language, and went through zoning bylaw review, and I think Land Use as well, you voted for May. But where we stand right now, there was a bunch of questions that came out of the last meeting. I'll read the definition that we have right now. The definition is "The use of a residential unit for occupancy by a person or persons for a period of fewer than 28 consecutive calendar days for a fee. A short-term rental may or may not be facilitated through a booking agent. A short-term rental is an occupied property that is not a hotel, motel, lodging house, inn, or bed-and-breakfast establishment where at least one room or unit is rented. A short-term rental includes an apartment, house, cottage, condominium, or condominium or other accommodation." And then, in the use table, we are prohibiting across the board, short-term rental within Burlington. And the same as an accessory use.
Kristen?
Yep.
It says yes under, in the overlay districts? Why is that?
So, the overlay districts, aquifer and water resource, and I think this question comes up each meeting, but, you know, we could go either way. The aquifer-water resource overlay is specifically for uses that impact the aquifer and water resource. We personally don't believe that a short-term rental is something that would negatively impact aquifer-water resource, something like fuel storage, or structuring, or other types of uses. We probably have a higher prohibition. Somebody has a lot of feedback. But in terms of, you know, I talked to Town Council about it. If, you know, if you feel strongly about it, it doesn't mean that you can do it in the aquifer-water resource overlay. If you can't do it in the underlying zoning district, in that particular overlay, you still can't do it, but if we, if people have a lot of heartburn over it, we can, it's not a huge issue to, for me to have no request.
No, I see. I'm just checking the relationship between a district and an overlay district, but if the underlying district is no, then it doesn't matter that it says yes for the overlay?
In, in, in the aquifer-water resource district, that is the case.
Okay.
The overlay doesn't prevail unless it's more restrictive than the underlying. So, the underlying being more restrictive, therefore, the aquifer-water resource won't. But, if, that's not, that's not a rule for a relator, but that particular one, that's the case.
Okay. So, we're basically prohibiting short-term rentals in Burlington?
Through this proposal, that is what, that is what we're doing, yes.
Okay.
Kristen, this is Betsy Hughes. I have a question about 28 days. The Massachusetts short-term def, short-term rental definition says it's a period of less than 31 consecutive days. Is there a reason why we're not consistent with the state?
So, I talked to Council about that today, and what she mentioned, whether it's 28, 30, or 31, what it needs to be, is it needs to be something that is within that month, not restricting, so, general rules, zoning may not govern form of ownership. So, whether you own your house, and you rent your house, and you rent month-to-month. So, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we didn't have all the, the right phrases to use to explain. So, there's a landlord-tenant-tenancy laws in Massachusetts, so you, so, if for a short-term rental, as defined as, we've defined it, for instance, what she said, it could be 30 days, it could be 28, 29, 30. It's, I'm not exactly sure why the state, the, so the statutory definition doesn't have, which she mentions in the notes section, doesn't have the 31 days, but what she mentioned, so if someone said, as they asked us at our planning board meeting, can we do six months? You cannot do six months, because that crosses over into tenancy laws in Massachusetts, which we would violate, which the Attorney General would strike and say, that's not possible. However, 28, she said, anything on 30 or under 30, you could do. But we can, again, good question, so we'll ask.
Is there an advantage to us, as we're trying to get this approved by the Attorney General, to use the same language as the state, so that there, it will not be questioned, it will not be questioned as to why we're being arbitrary?
Yep. Um, well, we'll look to further define that. Um.
Kristen, just a couple things. I think the word occupants of transient nature comes into play, and I want to look up what that definition is of transient use. And then, just on a housekeeping order, our definition for short-term, it says, and further amended through Article 4, Section 4.2.0, should we not incorporate that, or should we not stipulate Article 4, Sections 4.2 and 4.3? Because we have it in the accessory use, which is under 4.3.
Yes, we should.
All right. Thank you.
That's why we're here. Okay. Um, let's see. I don't know, Mike Castillo and Bill Gaffney, you guys really started looking into this. I don't know if you want to say a few things before I get into some of the other questions that it came up from our planning board meeting?
This is Mike here. Thanks, Kristen. Not really, I just, I just really feel for the residents in that Windmere area, and we're doing a disservice to our, our town here by have, by not, moving really quickly on this. I know there's a process, but it's very frustrating. I've heard a lot of complaints, and we really want to preserve the sanctity of our neighborhoods by allowing these things. I really don't see a real benefit to the town to allow short-term rentals, so hopefully we can move forward. It's been a long process, and I just really feel for some of our residents who have dealt with some of the stuff we've heard, especially in the last six to eight months, it's been a frustrating thing, and I just feel for them, so, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thanks. The other question that it came up through, I'm not sure if it was the planning board or other, but the question of renting a room versus renting the whole house? And what, if you look at the memo that Council had put together earlier this year, what that gets at is kind of a taxation issue? And what she mentioned, when I talked through it, was, in terms of the zoning piece, we could, and, you know, I, she was going to look at the language to see if we needed to specifically deal with the renting of single rooms versus whole house. If we do decide to move forward, we probably should eliminate the renting of room section that we already have in the bylaw, and/or modify it to make it consistent with what we're doing here. We currently have a renting of rooms by special permit by the planning board. It doesn't have a timeframe delineated, so in terms of, should, should we be putting room versus whole house here? Maybe, maybe not, but what we do need to think about is modifying that other section, which we've advertised widely enough to figure out, if, because we don't want it to be conflicting. The other thing is, in terms of the zoning bylaw and the general bylaw, what she mentioned was, the general bylaw really gets into the licensure process, and then talked a little bit about zoning and grandfathering and other things. And what I asked her specifically was, if we move forward with this piece in the zoning in September, does that make any difference if we want to follow up in January with the general bylaw? And she actually said that it prob, it might actually make more sense, because once we pass the zoning, you'll get people coming out of the woodwork worried that they can't continue to do what they're doing. And then, at that time, we can make sure that we're aware of who's going to try to say that they're grandfathered or not, which I think we can argue most of them are not. But if there is any issues that currently exist that we want to make sure, if someone, so first, for instance, if someone did say, and could prove that they were grandfathered to allow to rent rooms and be an Airbnb, what we would do to tackle that was, would be to create a general bylaw, which would require a license every year, every two years, every whatever. So, they would need to go to the selectmen to get that license, and then, you know, whatever the renewal period is, you could evaluate. So, anyway, that's, that's not for today, that piece, but that's a piece that she did recommend we continue to discuss, but moving forward with the zoning piece doesn't preclude anything that we would continue to do in the general piece. And that's, that's, I guess, all I have. The questions, yeah, so the questions that I had already set, put out, should we differentiate between a whole house and single room? I think we need to look at the existing bylaw provision. The timeframe, she did, as I talked to her after I had written this, mentioned that it needs to be in that under month or under timeframe. So, so with that, I open it up for questions.
This is Dan Tucci. Just a couple of questions. So, I know, like, there are builders in town that have homes that they own, that they just basically allow people to occupy for periods of time, and my understanding is, it's not always paid for, but I guess, if you let someone just stay in a house you own, that probably, this probably doesn't apply, or doesn't?
Well, by definition, that we have, it's for a fee. So, I mean, if you have a buddy, and he's just staying at your house.
That's it. You're, okay.
You know, that's, it's really, it's, it's, I mean, that's kind of a casual, you have a friend staying at your house, other than you're, you're operating a commercial business using your house. I mean, that's really the difference in why the state has carved out short-term rentals, specifically, out of this tenancy and landlord issue, because these are businesses, they're not just you using your property as a rental or an ownership to, but it's really changing the nature of what it is. So, just keep that in mind as we continue to talk through it.
This is Ernie. I had a question. Does it, does it make sense for us just to talk a little bit more about the 28 or 31 days, and maybe just agree, at least among this group, whether it should be? In my opinion, I don't see any reason it shouldn't be the 31 days, but may, maybe I'm not seeing something.
Well, I think the question is, do people support the most we can do and have the AG support it? Because we don't want to have too much and not have it be supported, so.
And then, just to be clear, the state regulation says less than 31, so that would be 30 or less?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Maybe that's, that's a discussion issue for the individual groups. Okay.
I have that as a question to follow up, to make sure we have a good answer for that.
Thank you.
Well, just one thought, which is, I assume it was written for 28 days to include February? So, if it said 30 days, would that mean it would be okay to use your house as a B&amp;B on, in February?
Yeah, because you'd say less than, you wouldn't, you wouldn't say a specific number. At least, that's the way the state did it.
So, would that be 30 days or less?
Again, I didn't get what Council said, there's no strict case law yet on this, but it's really in, do you fall into, you have a commercial business that you're renting it short-term, or are you renting it month-to-month? If you're renting it month-to-month, then you're in landlord-tenant roles. If you're in short-term rentals, it's, you're in these roles. So, if you can clearly prove that it's short-term, and your bylaw is directed at that, it should pass muster, but that's, you know, she, it's, it's not as black as, as black and white, but it's certainly, if you're renting your house month-to-month, it's certainly not going to fall into a short-term rental category under the state provision.
Kristen, this is Mike. I thought we were talking 28 and less on this, and just not like, exactly 28, anything, 28 or?
We had, that's the, how it's written, drafted right now, is 28 or less. 28, so, a period of, for persons, for a period of fewer than 28 consecutive days for a fee.
Okay, thanks.
So, that's how we have it written right now, which would be fine with the Attorney General.
This is Sally. So, if I rented a room for 30 days, then that would be considered a short-term rental? Or would that be a month-to-month?
If you rent, under the bylaw, it's 28, fewer than 28 days, so if you rented it for 30 days, that would be a month rental, not a short-term rental.
Do you video on?
No.
But it's not month-to-month?
Well, if you had decided to stay for another month, I mean, if you would just, if you rented it for 30 days, and then you rented it for five days, your second one would have been, could have fallen into the short-term rental.
Jim, I'll talk to you later. I'll talk to you later. See you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, if we, if you think of any, we can circle back at the end, if you're thinking about it and jot down any questions as we move through. So, moving on, we will move into uses and use regulations and definitions pertaining to self-storage facilities. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Betsy and Dave Webb to give us a background and outline, and happy to answer any other questions.
Perfect. Thanks, Kristen. Dave and I are proponents of two articles, one a definition and the other additional use table, additions to the use table. But before we kind of get into the nuts and bolts of that, for those of you who are not aware of this, these, these facilities, thought maybe some background would be helpful. According to BizNow and Self-Storage, Self-Storage of 38, for income-producing real estate self-storage facilities are one of the easiest, least expensive, and highest-yielding types of property with high returns, low maintenance, employing only one onsite manager. Land that is used is usually not desirable for other development, such as an office building or apartments. Many of them are going up instead of, in the old days, they used to take up a lot of land, now they're just going higher as opposed to wider. Building costs are low, because there's little, little plumbing, the floors are concrete, there are no windows, no trim, and almost completely free of maintenance. Tenants move in the units with no involvement or oversight from the onsite manager and move out with no effort on the part of the owner. And if they don't pay, their things are auctioned, and the unit is rented to somebody else. According to an April 2019 Wall Street Journal article entitled "Towns to Self-Storage Facilities: Please Go Somewhere Else." Towns across the country are feeling overstuffed with these storage facilities, and are putting the brakes on further development. We saw this locally in Woburn, where they elected to ban further development of these businesses due to concerns about the devaluing neighboring properties, low tax revenue, and the lack of job creation. And those are all quoted from Mr. Hegarty, who's on the Town Council, in 2017. Even closer to home, in 2019, Jumbo Self-Storage purchased property on Blanchard Road near residences and premier office space. They went before Planning Board and Conservation Commission for approval to build a five-story, 1,000-unit storage facility that is going to be visible from 128 and from the homes that are on Blanchard or can look out on the Blanchard. The developers intend to flip the building once completed, so there's no evidence of their commitment to our community. If one were to look within five miles of our town, one would find that there are over 11 storage facilities available to those who need them. In visiting a number of these facilities, I found that none of them are fully occupied. In talking to the onsite manager, I heard a number of common themes. They always have space for rent, they often have a rental area in the front, so you can buy packing materials, they have, many of them have 24-hour access to the gate, which is not monitored by people, but just by cameras. They have signs saying, "No hazardous materials or illegal materials are allowed to be stored there." However, there's nobody to monitor it, and if you put, you know, I don't know, put something awful in a box and seal it, they don't know, but they just have a camera that sees you moving in the box. Asked a couple of managers what was the most unusual problems that they've had, one of them said that just a few months ago, they had someone actually living in their storage unit, and had been there for quite a while, they kind of caught them on camera, but they had been using their one bathroom that they had, and that they were living there. And another unit said that someone had stored their pets in the unit, which I can't quite understand how that works, but they did. From a community perspective, self-storage facilities tend to be unattractive, not be reused for other purposes should they fail, and fail or your neighboring sites. The town of Burlington has gone to great lengths to attract biotech companies, corporate headquarters, and the development of premier office space. So, why would we continue to allow it to be used by businesses that detract from those efforts? As there is no provision in the Burlington bylaws to preclude such a development as Jumbo Self-Storage, despite the united voice of Precinct 7 homeowners, neighboring businesses, and imploring the conservation and planning committees to say no, those committees had no basis to do so, and so this was approved. As Woburn, as I mentioned before, banned further development of self-storage facilities, Burlington becomes even more attractive for these, for additional development. Should we allow it, it will, there will be others that will want to follow. Dave Webb and I, as representatives from Precinct 7, have proposed these bylaw amendments to prohibit further expansion in our town of this sort of unfavorable development. So, that's kind of the background of what we're doing. Dave, did I miss anything?
No, I think you, you hit it very well, Betsy. I just would say that there's a lot of risks that have been recorded associated with these facilities. There's worries about traffic, drugs, theft of materials in these areas, and the individual units, environmental hazards, as Betsy said, we're never, these things are not very well monitored, we're never quite sure what, what gets put in these facilities, and in some cases, there have been leakage of these, out of these individual units. And this is a very sensitive wetlands area, even though the Conservation Commission ultimately passed on it, this is a previously built-on area, believe it or not, but now it's all wooded, surrounded by wetlands. If anybody knows that Blanchard area, Wheeler Road, it's, the road essentially is a dissection and cuts through wetlands on both sides, and occasionally floods. So, it's a very poor area to even build anything, but they were able to manage to get this structure in, as you said, it's fairly inexpensive to build these things, it has a high payback for the builders, but we see very little benefit of such a structure to the neighbors or the town in general.
So, we have proposed, that was a definition of self-storage facility, as a building or group of buildings consisting of individual self-contained units with interior or exterior access linked to individuals, organizations, or businesses for self-service storage of non-hazardous personal property, goods, products, materials, or objects. This was drafted dates on definitions from the, a kind of compilation of them from the Planner's Guide, as well as Woburn's and a couple of other towns. In addition, we're proposing that in the retail, consumer, and trade use use table, we add a new section, 4.2.6.31, for self-storage facility, and we say no in all areas. So, that's it. Any questions, comments?
This is Sally. Betsy, will the, will the facility on Blanchard Road, that would then be, be able to be built? Is that true?
Yes, I, it's already been approved, so I think we're too late. This is the closing the door after the horse is on the way a little bit, but I think we're very concerned about the fact that because neighboring towns are never allowed them or banning them, it is becoming more and more probable that Burlington would be a hotspot given our geography, the more additional development of the unsightly and non-productive
A follow-up question. If this organization were to close down because they really couldn't fill it, despite what they might say, would it, that would mean that future storage facilities would be grandfathered into that space? Is that true?
So, all the existing, all the existing self-stores that exist in Burlington would be considered legal non-conforming if they've been permitted?
Okay.
Any comments?
Hi, this is Barbara. I, I made a mistake, sorry. This is Barbara. My only comment is, I'm very grateful to Betsy and David for taking this on. I think this is what we need to do, and it's, to me, it's a no-brainer. I think we should move forward.
Thank you, Barbara.
So, I have a question for Andy, actually, if Andy is still there.
I am.
Do we ever see this? Do we ever see this type of use accessory to anything else in Burlington?
Give me a minute.
I can't think of it. I just wanted, and I can't think of, even if it was accessory, if we'd support it. So, I mean, that was my question. Do we need to address it in accessory uses as like it's a thing? But it seems like it's not a thing. But then again, do you want to make sure it doesn't become a thing by not, or putting it or not putting it in accessory? I mean, if it's not there, you can't do it. So, as written, so.
What's to stop? I think we ought to put it in the accessory section as well, too. Because what's to stop somebody buying a commercial space and only, or occupying a commercial space and only operating out of a certain percentage of area within that, and then potentially leasing out space to other people in a, in a, you know, a sectioned-off area within, within their space, you know, subleasing it? I, I would say that's probably a good catch. I would put it in the accessory use as well, too.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Well, because I was thinking kind of like those buildings behind the town center off Grand Ave, kind of, where they have, they rent garages to contractors and stuff to park their vehicles, which is fine. And that's, but would any of those become roll-up self-storage? And I didn't really want that to be a thing.
Somebody could easily subdivide that and lease it out to multiple, multiple individuals all at the same time.
Right, but again, if it's not there, it's not allowed. But if you want to make sure it's not allowed, should we add it as well? So that's the question I had.
I would suggest it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Webb, can you mute your phone? It looks like you have, it looks like you have audio coming.
Okay, is it the feedback? I muted a few folks. Did the feedback end?
No, it's still there, Kristen.
About now.
That's good.
Hey, Webb, I think it's your, you got a little feedback on your, your line. Okay, so I guess additional question, yep.
I have a question. Is it possible to prohibit something entirely throughout the town? I, I know we had a problem with adult bookstores and whatever. We had to at least allow them in one district. How will we, how do we get around that, Kristen?
So, question was asked today that yes, we can do that. We cannot do that for adult entertainment. We cannot do that for wireless. But through statute, those are, they're prohibitions statutory for those particular uses. But she said not to worry about a, across-the-board prohibition on a use like this one. I, I agree with you. I had the same question where we've heard in the past that you shouldn't just say, allow, you know, define something and just say no to it across the board, especially when your bylaw says if it's not listed, it's not allowed. But where, and I think Andy can relate, where sometimes there's a gray area of what it is. I mean, because in the past, we've called this storage and warehousing, where we still allow storage and warehousing and just to make sure that self-storage facility is not considered storage and warehousing. It might be important to make that delineation.
Okay, thank you.
On, on Ernie's comment, if you wanted to, you could just put it in the BT Zone District.
But then what would happen if Midas Muffler went out of business?
You'd have a very small location.
Have a tall location.
Yes, that's true. That could happen.
I would, I, yeah, I, I, I think we talked about this and we decided we didn't want to take a chance on it going anywhere other than another town.
Yeah.
If council thinks it's going to pass the AG, just fine. I would, I would just march forward. If the AG comes back and says something different, they'll fix it at that time.
Yeah. Just, just one further comment. Thank you, Dave, David, and, and, and Betsy for getting into this. But I, I think one of the reasons this particular piece of property turned into a self-storage was basically because it couldn't be anything else profitably. And usually land is too valuable in Burlington to set up a self-storage, as you, as you read. I mean, it's, it's usually used for parking property or for, let's buy this piece of property and wait and see what happens. But thank you, thank you, anyways.
I actually think to Betsy's point that it's kind of a threat because it is so cheap to come in, and it does make so much money. I mean, it, you can go in for a higher land cost and actually make a profit with self-storage. So to the question that I always get asked in the beginning, is it worth doing this? Do we see this happening more? You know, because you don't want to do something that's not really a worry. I, I do think that this is important.
Yeah, especially in these uncertain economic times coming forward.
Yeah, well, wait till the next discussion on warehousing and storage and distribution. So, other questions on, on this?
This is Dan DiTucci. Betsy and Dave, great work on this. I 100% agree. I've used one of these facilities before, and I, and I think there's going to be, quite frankly, a massive influx of people that are going to be coming into the suburbs from the cities. And I think it's great that we're getting ahead of this because I think there's going to be demand for these.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, I guess we're up to the next one. Yeah, thanks, Kristen.
Sounds good. So, so Betsy, let's work together just to figure out how to incorporate into accessory as well.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, love it.
We'll, we'll work on that.
Okay.
Um, okay, so next, petition to amend zoning bylaw article two definitions. Article four use regulations, article five parking, pertaining to warehouse, storage, and distribution. So when Betsy called me about self-storage, I said, that sounds great. I, I applaud moving forward. But at the same time, we've spent a lot of time thinking about storage, warehousing, distribution, fulfillment centers, as we're seeing kind of every retail changing a lot, and trying to figure out how to get ahead of that. And what is it? And how, we don't really have a good definition for what a fulfillment and distribution center is other than what we have for storage and warehousing. So if we're going to break apart storage from the planning department staff, we thought it was important to kind of get at these other type of uses that are certainly going to be right in front of us. Just more, I think recently in Borreka, they just permitted a distribution center. There's a couple other ones. Amazon Distribution Center up in Andover, they just permitted a big, a big, big, big warehouse and big distribution center. And it's kind of the question of, is it? You know, I think what we worry about, you know, we worry about the future of the mall and what's happening and future retail. And I don't think any of us want kind of a giant trucking terminal of stuff, leaving, you know, putting together and then leaving the site. But as kind of e-commerce and these retailers are creating different options for pickup by consumers themselves and/or doing some kind of point-to-point delivery and distribution, I think that's something we want to be thinking about and considering and really understanding what this is and how it works, who it's working for, and what are the impacts that we want to make sure we avoid, such as, you know, a whole bunch of tractor-trailers driving through our streets in Burlington, and/or giant standalone distribution facilities. So I sent you guys an article link that just came out in Wall Street Journal two days, two or three days ago, just saying that, you know, Amazon and Simon are looking at all the vacant JCPenney stores and the Sears stores and looking to turn them into fulfillment and distribution centers for Simon and their, Simon and different stores as well as Amazon. So, you know, we're, we don't have vacancies in JCPenney stores, but, you know, what's the future of the Macy's store? It's what's, just kind of understanding what these things are, kind of getting ahead of it. So what we've proposed is four new definitions. Right now, we have in the bylaw, in the use table, the word storage and the word warehouse. But we don't really define it. And that's kind of where Betsy gets that self-storage facility. It had, it had rested in that category. But taking that out, kind of what are we left with? And so we added a definition for a distribution facility, a facility where goods are received and/or stored for processing, fulfillment, and delivery to customers. Storage is buildings or part of buildings used for storage of personal items and consumer goods. Warehouse, a facility engaged in long-term storage and distribution of products, supplies, and equipment. And then wholesale trade and establishment primarily engaged in selling merchandise for retailers, industrial, commercial, institutional, construction contractors, or professional business users or to other wholesalers or acting as agents or brokers of buying merchandise for or selling merchandise to such persons or companies. Wholesale trade is not direct retail sale to the consumer. So that was a mouthful. And then from there, look at the existing 4275, which was wholesale trade and warehousing, keeping that as basic wholesale trade, as it was, pretty much, separating distribution center facility and allowing in BT and IG. And if the, if, I mean, if they were in the water resource, also need a special permit. And warehouse only allowed in, a long-term storage warehouse only allowed in BT. So we're pretty much prohibiting long-term storage principally used warehousing by doing this. Maybe allowing distribution in some of our IG property. And then in the accessory use structures areas, which is, I think, where a lot of the conversation's going to rest in the next couple of weeks, is distribution facility incidental to a permitted principal use. And that we have as special permit in BG, BT, IG, IH, and IR, as well as storage incidental, oh, and then storage incidental to a permitted principal use, which is a yes in BG, BT, IG, and special permit in the town center districts. So with that, so distribution, we were kind of thinking through, okay, so if we have, you know, Kohl's or Macy's, and they are big spaces, and maybe they are, I mean, Macy's is 250,000 square feet. If Macy's took 50,000 square feet and turned it into more of a regional fulfillment area, is that an issue? And I think what we need to understand is what additional delivery, large vehicle transportation that would entail from what we have now? But is that something that we'd really be worried about? I don't know. You know, we want to make sure the businesses still survive, but they're not, you know, not principal use distribution. And then for the storage piece, and Andy, you'll, what I struggle with a lot is we have a lot of storage use, and we break it down into what's your storage, retail, office use when we do a parking calculation? But we never actually allow for storage as an accessory part of the use. So it's always kind of, oh, it's incidental, so it's fine. But, well, if it doesn't say it and it's not allowed, is it fine? So I wanted to get at that piece of it, and that's why we have it. Breaking down storage being just really a storage of commercial goods. So if you have a store and you have storage in the back, that's what you have, separate from warehousing or wholesale trade. So, anyway, so I, I wanted to allow what we thought was kind of a lighter piece of it, but make sure that we had a handle on more of the principal use type of distribution and fulfillment. So this is all kind of new, but wanted to get ahead of it. I don't have all the answers today, but just wanted to make sure that we were thinking about the right thing and the right kind of, as the trends move forward, as to what retail space and how that's going to change and evolve, and what we want to make sure we want and what we don't want. So with that, if anyone else has any comments on the proposal itself or just questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question, Kristen, Dave Webb. I worry a little bit about, we just been through the self-storage thing, and now you have this definition for storage. And in the definition I see, I think it's the one you're reading, buildings or parts of buildings used for storage of personal items and/or consumer goods. The personal items worries me. I mean, people are going to ask, is that overlapping with the self-storage situation? Can we clarify that?
Yep, that's a good question.
That was my question as well. I thought we probably could delete that because it's handled under the self-storage.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, what, what we're trying to get at is, is, as I mentioned, like if you have, if you have a retail store, you have any, anything that you, you know, you have X product for retail, and then you have stuff in the back that, that you are selling from your store or your place, not someone else is renting that out to store their. So I guess the word personal might be problematic.
Yeah, yeah. We could call it something else.
Kristen, you can put in there the storage of, of items accessory or to the function of that primary use.
That sounds great.
And one other item. Do we want to include with the accessory use under 4.3, wholesale trade with an incidental retail, retail use?
I, that's, that already exists in the bylaw.
All right.
Wholesale, that, if you are a wholesaler, so if you're, you're Ferguson fast fitters.
There's what I'm thinking of.
So that in the bylaw right now, you are a wholesale trade. But you are allowed a wholesaler to sell parts to retail. So we got into this whole thing with Advanced Auto Parts. So they were a wholesaler, but you, you can't, you can't do it the other way. If you're a retailer, you can't sell wholesale. If you're wholesale, you can sell a small portion retail.
All right, so we're not, we're not, we're not deleting that. It still goes there.
Not provisioned, no.
All right, thank you.
So the things that I, I'm trying to understand a little bit more as we move through this is just that of kind of what the different, what the impact is of, you know, for long-term warehousing, it's kind of, long-term storage, but for these distribution and fulfillment centers, really how, there's no real ITE that's very good yet. So it's really site-specific. And so I'm, I'm trying to gather data right now as to what, what some of the other more recently permitted in other towns, distribution facilities have for trip generation of different types of vehicles. So I'm trying to pull that together as we continue to talk about this to really understand where that sweet spot is to allow for the evolution of some of our retailers, but obviously not go over that threshold of something that might be, you know, negatively detrimental to our roadways. I don't know that balance quite yet, but working on it.
Kristen, this is Sherry. I have a question. You define, or you use the term long-term storage for warehouse. Do, is there a, is that a known term? Does it need to be defined? And are the other storage and distribution facilities, are these short-term? Or, so what is the kind of thought process in that?
So when you look at the difference between warehousing and distribution, what you're seeing, warehousing is usually larger. Larger areas, distribution facilities are smaller, more, more of them, more regional, more local, locally distributed. So it, you know, there's a couple of different ways you can think about it. But I was trying to make it neutral enough and not overly specific. But really, the warehouse is, the manufacturer makes the stuff, or the stuff comes off a cargo ship. It goes to a warehouse in the giant, you know, and then from there, it goes to these fulfillment centers that then fulfill it and bring it to you. So, and that's kind of the chain of generally how things are working. But in terms of exact language, we're open to suggestions as we move forward. I don't know if that answered your question at all.
No, that's good. I guess I, I would look, like to look at it a little bit more because in theory, I guess what I'm thinking is that if this is a warehouse, something that's in the warehouse isn't going to be stored for a long time. It's in there for a short time, and then it goes out to the distribution facility. So is somebody going to play on words and saying, oh, well, we have this building, but the stuff isn't in there for very long? I mean, in general, yeah. I mean, in general, yes, there's a lot of stuff in there, but it goes in and comes out, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, distribution centers are all warehouses, but not all distribution centers, no. Distribution centers are warehouses, but not all warehouses are distribution centers. That's what I meant to say. But, you know, how exactly do we say that? This is a good question. Okay, thanks.
I mean, I think the other thing too is, if you think about it like that, like you talk about Amazon, they produce very little. So anything that they bring into a facility, it has to, you know, they're not, they're not making it there. So it's getting delivered from someone and then it's getting sent out to someone, in any case. Right, because they're not, I think, I read that same article, Kristen, so I know exactly what you're talking about. We have to be very concerned about the mall, I, I think, because that is an absolute target for this.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, but we don't, we, we want to allow for e-commerce and, you know, even if it's customer fulfillment and customer pickup, as well as fulfillment and maybe delivery to Burlington, Billerica, Lexington and Bedford. I mean, that's one thing, but is it, are we more of a regional center now where you take the entire Macy's and then it's a giant distribution hub for here to Lowell or here to Nashua? You know, that's, we don't want that. But local, local fulfillment and delivery, is that a bad thing? Not necessarily, but we need to understand it, I think, a little bit better. Okay.
Kristen, just a comment, this is Betsy.
Yep.
First of all, I'm delighted you're doing this, so thank you. I also am concerned about the mall. I think that there are certain towns who've gotten ahead of this, and certain developments have gotten ahead of that. Certainly Lynnfield did with the marketplace and Woburn with their new development of, I'm not sure what they're going to call it, but the outside walking thing with all the things they've got going on. So the more that we can encourage that kind of creativity and less about the using us as a hub to get things to other places, I think is going to be in the long-term best interest of developing Burlington into the kind of town we want it to be.
Yeah, I mean, I think the good news is that we've been actively talking to Simon and Macy's for the future of the mall. I mean, and they're not looking to make a quick, quick change to, I mean, I think where you're seeing Sears and JCPenney's are the malls that aren't doing, I think the article is why is Amazon buying, you know, these rundown malls? We're not a rundown mall, we're the, you know, one of the highest grossing malls in New England. So I, I think there's portions of uses that might, we might be thinking about, but anyway, I, I agree with you. I want to be ahead of it. And I also, so anyway, I, we need to be open, I think, for the evolution of whatever the mall's going to be to make sure we don't land in this type of conversation. Okay, other questions? If not, moving right along. So with that, the next up is Article Two definitions signage, which I'll hand it over to Sally. We did get some information from council today, which is a lot of information, which I think we can take as some questions and begin to digest from tonight. Maybe highlight a few things in there, but anyway, with that, I'll let Sally kick it off.
All right, thank you, Kristen. For those of you who don't know, I'm Sally Willard. I'm the chair of the zoning bylaw review committee, signage subcommittee. We began meeting in February. Who was there? Ernie, Sherry, Betsy and Mike Murray have been consistently there. We have representatives from the general bylaw committee, Dave Miller and Phyllis Newfeld. We started down this path because signage has, and the regulation has been an issue in the town for a number of years. The last serious effort to change the sign bylaws to come up with something was an undertaking generally by the business community and the planning boards. The, it broke down, everything broke down because of disagreements as to the approach. Would probably be a kind way to put it. We have pieces of signage regulations in the zoning bylaw in a couple of places, including under the town center overlay, Article Eight, Section Five, I think. And also in the general bylaw. That is in Article 14, Section Three. Article 14 has to do with safety and wetlands and other things that have nothing to do with signs. Definitions for, all, all of sign definitions are in the general bylaw. They are not in the zoning bylaw. I think there are three, three definitions in the zoning bylaw that simply address the sign, the definition of a sign, the definition of a sign area and so on, but there's no breakdown as to different types of signs. Now, businesses need signs so that you know when you're driving or walking by that they're there. When you want to buy, they're looking for something that they're selling. And we have a hodgepodge around town. The effort that we began is to simply start, start down the path of updating our signage in our bylaws. So we decided that we would start with the definitions because without definitions, you can't regulate. So if you have one of those blowy signs that's either a flag type or it's a, you know, the CarMax type of thing that waivers 25 feet tall, you have two different types of signs. And we don't have definitions and we don't have a way to allow. One of the issues that we have in town is we have a lot of small businesses along Cambridge Street. A lot of them want to put out A-frames or sandwich floors, and those are not allowed. So what we've decided to do, our path was to start with the definition, simply because, as I said, you can't regulate something unless you define it. We started down that path by looking at what we have in the general bylaw and then going to the planner's guide, looking at what's available at the International Sign Association. We have taken a lot of material and boiled it down to four pages of definitions of signs. As you can see from the documents that went out, we have, we have a lot of signs. We have some that we have questions about that we're still discussing, some that we're not sure that we need. We have been in contact with the International Sign Association, who has offered feedback on our definitions. And we, at our next meeting, will start to address some of what they've offered and decide whether or not we want to include that. In my discussions with the sign association and when they attended our sign, subcommittee meeting last week, they agreed with the path that, that we've chosen, which is to start with the bylaws and then address the regulations. Sorry, start with the definitions and then address regulations. Now, because these are in the sign bylaw, that's where the definitions are today, we are working with the general bylaw committee, general bylaw review committee, to both submit a set of definitions. So if town meeting can't handle four pages of definitions that would go into the zoning bylaw, then the sign bylaw, general bylaw committee will propose the same definitions to replace what is currently in the general bylaw. So we will both have the exact same definitions going to town meeting. And you may, you may wonder why we're doing that. Well, it's because it's, you know, you only need a majority to, to ask a change to the general bylaw. I think that with enough information, people will say, yes, we, we don't have what we need and therefore we agree that this is a good first step. Our next step after that is to address some rules and regulations. One of the reasons that I, that I believe that we need to have this in the zoning bylaw is because the planning board reviews site plans and they can't say anything about signage because the signs are not defined or addressed in, in the zoning bylaw. And therefore, they really can't talk, can't address that in the site plan review. So that's why I believe, and I think the committee believes that. We've gone through every definition. Virtual meetings have been wonderful for us because we put it on screen and we just have discussed each one to the point that we believe that we have succinct and concise definitions that will cover just about any kind of sign that, that someone wants to propose. After that, it's getting to the regulations. If you look at the town center overlay regulations, there is a fleeting reference to, since Section 8.5, and I have it up here. There's a fleeting reference to signage, but there is no, there's no defined signs and for the town center overlay. And I think that's probably part of the reason that recent signage, recent new signs and sign proposals have met such, have resulted in what they have. Because within the absence of definitions or regulation of signage in the town center overlay, the, the rules fall to the underlying zoning. And the underlying zoning allows a signage that's, you know, half the size of the building on the urgent care facility and on three faces of the building. So we think that we're taking a measured approach and we think that we're going at it in an appropriate manner as we go forward. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Sally, this is Monty. Let's see here, just a clarification. On your list of signs, you have three in red? The sign, sign area and sign structure, are those to be taken out or added in? Or what are they, is there?
No, those are going to stay, but that was simply to highlight for our purposes that we have some discussion left on those. So that's, that's the only reason it's like that. By the time it gets to town meeting, that, they won't be read, but we will have fully defined them because we have some questions. We have some questions of Mr. Ungerson that we think that he can help us address that. And there are, there are other ones too. For example, obscene signs, you know, what's an obscene sign? That's in that list, but we're not sure that that's something that we want to include because it, it, it may or may not make sense to try and regulate, which of course is based on community standards. What are those community standards? We have others, they, they just didn't show up highlighted in, in the document. I have something that has all of our comments and questions.
Okay. So are, are all of these definitions, some defined somewhere in some standard zoning things and then you guys work them over? How did you come up with, for example, the definition of a flashing sign?
We looked at what we have for, for all of these. We started with what do we have in Article 14 of the general bylaw? And we did research of signage, sign definitions as well as the other aspects of signs. In Planner's Dictionary, we've referred to all of the towns surrounding us. And we've looked at material they had at the International Sign Association. So we, we think that we have covered a lot, but it also gives us something that we can say, you know, this, this type of sign is or isn't allowed in some, in a particular district.
Uh huh, uh huh. And, and it's.
You can't regulate it without definition.
Yes, and so these definitions, you would say, are not oriented towards any particular kind of way of regulating signs, they're just definitions of what various things are?
Correct.
Okay, so basically the idea is that everybody will now know what a monument sign is?
Correct.
Okay, because the term gets thrown around a lot and I've never been exactly sure what people mean by it. Okay, and so the other thing is, is that are there instances of other towns that have large numbers of definitions like this?
Um, yes. Yes, some have, I think Lynnfield has a, a lot more. But I, I think this is a fairly succinct number of definitions.
What I, I guess what I'm wondering is, is that do you, do you see it, have you guys run across a situation where a town had all of these definitions and then built from that to do regulations? Because I'm, I'm just, I'm not, I'm asking these questions not because I know that eventually it's going to be a very controversial subject. And I'm just hoping that, just trying to find out whether or not these definitions will make it easier for people or harder for people to reach agreement on things. And I'm just wondering if there are examples of towns where they adapted a bunch of definitions and then moved to regulations and, and that's probably too much to ask you, but if you knew of something like that, it would be helpful to know.
No, I don't know. But I'm sure that the folks at the sign association can help provide us with some information because they help cities and towns write their sign regulations.
Well, I'm just, what I'm thinking of is now as we're going in this conversation is, is that if I'm sitting there as a member of town meeting looking at this, I'm not really going to have a very good idea of whether or not your definition of an awning or a balloon sign is a good one. And so I think that would be helpful or reassuring if you could present them with a couple of instances of where towns started with this kind of neutral definition process and then were able to create out of that a process where people were able and then were able to create out of that, uh, process where people were able to reach agreements and actually put up regulations. Cause I, I'm, I'm assuming that there are a number of towns that have successful sign regulations as well. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, yes. And I think that the-
It would be comforting to, for, for a town meeting member who doesn't really know whether or not any of these definitions happen, to know that there are other places where they've used them successfully.
Well, I, I think, I think in most cases, what, um, what towns do is they, um, just as we did, they tackled it based on, um, information that was available whenever they initially created their bylaws.
Uh huh.
For example, if you look at our, uh, general bylaw, there are very few, um, definitions. So we expanded that list significantly. Simply because those types of signs were not, um, were not imagined or, uh, or used whenever the signed bylaw was created.
Uh huh.
Um, but I, I, I know that the, uh, the, uh, International Sign Association will be able to give us examples. Um, they may not be local, although they have recently worked with, um, Framingham and they've done some work, um, with, uh, at least one community on the South Shore to address their, um, to address their signage issues.
Uh huh. Yeah, I just know that in, in town meeting, when people are uncertain, uh, one of the things they like to hear is that there is a place that has tried this before and it worked. So anything you can do to, um, to show that this kind of process is going to lead us to a good end and, um, is going to be, I think, is going to be important in town meeting before, for, uh, people to kind of vote on all of these definitions that they don't really, they don't, they don't really have any idea whether it's going to help or hurt. Um, and so some previous, somebody else's experience would be helpful.
Okay.
Sally, this is Shari.
Yes.
I know that, I know that we received a lot of information from town council earlier today, um, through Kristen. I think Kristen, you had a, a meeting with her. Um, I, I haven't had a chance to read all that information. So can you give, Kristen, can you give us a, like a summary kind of, of, of your meeting and or just kind of some, like you said earlier, maybe some highlights of some things to, uh, to think about?
Sure. So her first, so I'll just kind of go over the highlights, um, of our conversation and what she sent to you. So, um, overall, she said she's fine with adding definitions. She had a question though of kind of just the process of adding definitions for terms that didn't currently exist in the bylaw. And kind of questions of, you know, are we looking at this? Um, I, I don't know. So I mean signage is chicken and egg. She, she actually, she said, you know, in all communities she works with for doing a recodeification. She says, okay, let's look at the whole bylaw. Let's put on, put aside for a minute, adult entertainment, wireless and sign bylaw. Cause those are really tricky. Look at these, these other things first. But, um, but anyway, she was just in terms of signage, she was looking at kind of a, what are the issues you're trying to get at? And I think what the conversation we had with the sign bylaw can, the international sign bylaw folks, we really got at, okay, well, let's figure out kind of how are we going to ask people or survey or figure out what are the issues in town that we're looking to solve? Um, you know, being, you know, the types of signs that were, that are going up that we don't like. I mean, we talk about internally lit illuminated block signs a lot, but you know, let's just get rid of those. Um, and then on the other side of it, just the permitting process and kind of unknown outcome, I guess, in terms of the businesses trying to get a sign permitted, um, as kind of, those are the obvious issues. But then there's a whole bunch of other kind of layers of things that we really haven't identified well enough to tackle. Um, and I think in the past, when we've looked at the sign bylaw and any of you that have been involved in it, please correct me if I'm wrong, but you can't, you know, it's looking at, okay, let's tweak these little pieces before, you know, without really looking at that overall. So in terms of Sally's point of really looking at the bigger picture and trying to start at a place where, well, if we don't define terms, we can't start talking about the terms. I mean, I think that's a worth, I think that's worth talking about. Um, but I think it needs to be, and I think what council's looking at is that she recommends we address the sign provision bylaw in a wholesome manner in looking at these definitions as well as how these definitions and types of sign are problems or solutions to get to really what we're looking for for the environment. Um, the red flags that she raised in her comments were the, kind of the issues which we see signs always with political signs, free speech signs, the political signs, obscene signs, people signs. I mean, does that mean someone walking down the street wearing a T-shirt that you don't like? So those were kind of red flags as the A G probably will knock those type of things down. So we, if we want to get at them, we need to do a lot more work. Um, if we want to leave them out of this round, she would probably recommend that. Um, let's see. So holistic, um, and then the last thing she, she mentioned was the general versus zoning bylaw approach. So, and I can kind of gave her a history and Ernie, you might be able to, Ernie or Andy might be able to remind me what happened in 1974 when we put in the general bylaw or, uh, zoning in general, general bylaw and zoning bylaw update. And I know at least Paul Raymond tells lots of stories about billboard signs and trying to get rid of billboards. She did remind me that billboards have a whole nother statutory framework built into the, uh, state law that, um, dealt with it. So anyway, she, I would be interested to get her opinion kind of on our framework right now in the general and the zoning bylaw and why we do it that way? Should we do it that way? Is it right or wrong? Um, and then she did mention you can do them in both, but don't do them in both to try to do an end run around one thing or the other. So if you get at that sunset provision, don't put it one place just so you can try to figure something out later. And that she mentioned if it's in the general, you're really looking again at kind of a licensure provision or, you know, how, how do these signs, um, what, what characteristics of the signs have a unique public safety or public health impact? Are they flashing signs? Are they signs in the roadway? Are they, you know, are there reasons that they need to be dealt with in the general bylaw? And I think some of our provisions within the general that deal with signs on the road, blinking, flashing, electronic, kind of just signs that are just distract drivers and people and other things makes sense. Um, but anyway, she, I, again, I, in listening to her today and reading the comments tonight, um, I'd be interested to think what her thoughts in general were of the breakdown of how we can regulating it. But I guess I also would like to hear from Andy between how you have, I mean, you deal with the sign bylaw more than anybody else on this call, um, in terms of the breakdown between zoning in general, um, as well as just overall, how you feel the sign bylaw works or doesn't work in terms of an approach that we should move forward. Or at least your thoughts, cause you deal with it every day. I deal with it kind of in the periphery.
I won't, I won't deny that, that having to deal with this, with sign bylaw and having to refer from zoning to general bylaw isn't difficult, especially when, uh, dealing with the sign companies, contractors or, or, um, uh, sign consultants. Often when I explain to them that something can or cannot be done, uh, the question or response is, well, it's not said so in the zoning bylaw. Oh, it is in the general bylaw. Um, so I'm constantly flipping back and forth. I, I have to admit, I, I, I've got my time in on, uh, with the general bylaw and I pretty much know it verbatim. So, um, uh, I really don't have a difficult time with our signs other than some of the technology that has come into play with, with our signs, illumination, um, its ability to LEDs, um, how bright these things can be. And, uh, uh, I think we, we need to possibly redefine and, and better, uh, better define what we have for some of our sign, uh, definitions presently. There, in my opinion, a lot of the definitions that Sally has here, um, in here for many of the signs are already incorporated into our bylaw or at least how I have interpreted them over my duration here with the town. Um, uh, and if we put all these definitions in to the bylaw, then we're certainly going to have to, um, uh, either give some allowances, uh, by size dimension and what have you, or, um, take what we have here in, in the definitions and, um, incorporate them into what we already have for, uh, certain signs in, in the general bylaw to further explain what potentially a freestanding sign is or what potentially is a projecting sign. Oftentimes we've called awnings, um, uh, projecting signs or blade signs, uh, as a projecting sign. A lot of the, uh, even an awning over an entryway, um, we've called the marquee because it's a roof-like structure over the door entry. Um, so I think, um, need a little bit more, um, insight as to all the signs that we have here on our list and, and seeing how we can incorporate it to what we already have. Um, just so that we're not going to get, um, lost into so many different definitions of signs.
So Sally, you got a question?
Uh, yes. And to address that, um, the, um, i- if we don't put this out, uh, for the zoning bylaw to add the definition, if, if the, if town meeting were to approve adding these definitions to the zoning bylaw, then, then the general bylaw committee will have an article to strip the definitions out of the general bylaw and refer all, uh, refer to the general, uh, to the zoning bylaw for all of the definitions. If town meeting were to say, no, we don't, this is too much for us to deal with in the zoning bylaw, you know, and we could only get, you know, 50% or 60%, then, um, the zoning bylaw will have an identical set of definitions that they are going to put forth for, to update the general bylaw with these same definitions. So whatever we come up with, um, ultimately even taking into consideration what the ISA has sent to us, their, um, their opinions, um, then the general bylaw, that will, uh, be proposed. If town meeting can't handle, um, all of these as a change as an add to the zoning bylaw.
I would love, I would love, I would love, uh, and it'd help me out dramatically if we can take, um, the, the first, um, uh, couple of sections of the general bylaw um, from, um, 3.0 or 3.1 to, um, 3.25 and move it into the general, into the zoning bylaw. That would help me out tremendously.
So to take, take general and move it into zoning?
Yeah. From everything from 3.1 to, to, uh, 3.25 and move that into zoning. That would help me out tremendously.
What, why, why specifically with that? Just from a, we don't know, we don't have, but you know.
Further, further on, further on from, further on from, uh, 3.25, the next section 3.3, it, it goes into, uh, permitted signs, um, into the different, uh, zoning districts. And that's just a duplicate of what we have already presently in the zoning bylaw.
So, so, so by doing that and by moving the other piece, which couldn't happen until, uh, January, then you would have, uh, everything consistently in the zone. You would prefer it to all be in the zoning bylaw?
Yes.
And, and Andy, would you be willing to tell town meeting that also?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So Sally, that might help.
That would, at, in, in our regulatory, uh, process and enforcement, um, that would help us out a lot easier, especially when, um, uh, just one point of, of, one point of review by, by the people whom we have to deal with, uh, on, on a daily basis for signs.
Good.
Um, our, our plan after, uh, after we get this done, um, we have, uh, our plan is to address the, um, the signage definitions and regulations in the town center overlay. Because that's where the, the town is growing. So Nordblum is over here on the west side. Um, there's the mall, but it's the smaller commercial areas around town that they're the ones that put out the, those floppy things. There is the one that put out all sorts of things just because they're trying to get our attention. And right now it's not regulated except you can't do it. You know, you, you can't have an apron. So by addressing first the town center overlay and then looking at the other smaller commercial areas, um, around town, and we have a number of them. There's the Route 60, uh, Wilmington Road Plaza, Wiltshire Plaza. Um, there's down Wind Street. You know, there's a lot of, there, there are a lot of smaller commercial areas. I, I could show you the zoning map that shows all of them. But, so that's why if we start with the definitions, we feel that we can then take that and say, okay, what, what do people not want or what do people want, what do the business owners want? Um, and then what do the residents want and not want in different areas? And different areas could be different, but we're hoping for some uniformity. Um, we have, um, yeah, I guess that's it.
I, Sally, I, I do, I do recommend that, that the town overlay district, the center of town, um, business district, that in my opinion is, is one of the most important, uh, uh, things that, uh, the bylaw, uh, the sign bylaw committee should be looking at, um, for, uh, some allowances and, and, and the regulation on.
I agree with Andy. This is Barbara. That's like the, that's item number one on the list, once we get the definition done.
Right.
That, that's right. That's, that's our first priority. And what we'll hope to do, um, and we'll try and get a lot of this, uh, Sign Association has offered, um, whatever kind of help they can provide, um, they're there for our questions. Um, and, uh, so that's, um, I, I think going to be very useful as we go forward. Um, the town center overlay, yes, is our first priority.
Sally, this is Shari.
Yes.
Do you know that the general bylaw committee has already submitted that the, the definitions as a placeholder? And is there any reason we couldn't add section, add what Andy is talking about, section 3.0 to 3.1, whatever it was, 25, and just delete their, you know, deleting it and moving it into ours? Oh, we can't move it, we can't move it into zoning because it's, we've already passed that deadline. So we can't take it out of general then. Never mind. I was talking out loud.
January.
Right.
Sometimes my brain takes a while to figure out what my mouth said. So never mind. It would have to be January.
Is, is there a, is there a, a legal issue, having it just duplicated in, into two, uh, two regs?
I, I, I think the, the problem is confusion. Even if we're only talking, uh, you know, four months, I, I think that it, it lends a level of confusion um, that we don't really want because one, the ZBA has to deal with all of the sign issues that come forward. And that's where they spend, uh, most of their time is, uh, addressing sign variance. This isn't going to help the sign variances, but at least we'll have some definitions that they have worked.
Um, if there are any board of appeal members on, on the, uh, on, on this here, um, well, Sally, I'll talk to you about that issue on a, on a, on, um, at another time.
Okay. And Mike generally attend, Mike Murray generally attends. And Mike generally attends, Mike Murray generally attends the signage committee meetings.
Yep.
And Andy, this is Betsy, you're welcome to join, I mean, you generally, you're on some of our calls too, I think, but it'd be good for us to discuss at our next meeting.
Be more than happy to.
So Sally and Andy, the deadline to submit our general articles is the 17th of August.
They're fully prepared.
Oh, right, I know, but I'm just saying, no, that's the 45 days for the.
I have, I have a copy of their submission.
Right, but in order, in terms of the 3.1 to 3.5 question?
I don't think that we should, as Sheri said, I don't think that we should remove any regulation from the, from the general bylaw at this time because we can't, at the same time, move it into the zoning bylaw. So I think for now, but certainly for Janu, for January, that can be right at the top of our, right at the top of our, our list.
Okay.
And I'll be glad to put that to the sign bylaw committee next week.
So any other questions or comments for, that we want to think about before the next time we talk about signage? I will forward counsel, I think I forwarded it to some of you, I'll forward it to a larger group. And if I please take a look at the group and forward along to those that I may have missed. So, okay, so moving on. Moving on to petition to rezone property located at 207 Cambridge Street. And the, which is from general industrial to general business. So I asked Brady to pull up the street view. So this is the Burlington Auto Supply. Right now, the front part of the building where, and Andy, you probably know where the line is more than I do, but I think it's pretty much where the ramp goes up to.
Yeah, just behind that telephone pole is where the line goes.
Okay, I was gonna say, right, like kind of the end of the ramp behind the telephone pole, the front half of the building is general business, underlying zone. The back half of the whole building, as well as all of Terry Avenue, is general industrial. So what the auto supply has benefited from is that they can have the retail auto supply up front and have all their wholesale in the back. As I mentioned before, when Advanced Auto was looking at the Busa Liquor Space, there was a lot of concern about that wholesale kind of warehousing portion of it, not really wanting to continue that type of dynamic, as well as the dynamic here. The planning board was looking to rezone this whole building to general business so we can attract more kind of town center-like, I mean, the town center allows, the overlay district allows for a whole diversity diversity of business. But as an underlying zone, a business who did want to do that kind of warehousing would be allowed in the underlying zone. So to encourage more kind of restaurants, retail, pedestrian, foot traffic type businesses, the planning board wanted to put forward a rezoning to have this whole building be EG instead of kind of split between the general business and general industrial. So that's, that's that.
And just also to let you folks know, I have been in contact with the property owner. Having the Burlington Auto vacate the property, that space occupies, did occupy three tenant spaces all at one, and he's looking to subdivide it back into those three individual tenant spaces as what it was prior to Burlington Auto Supply.
And did, Andy, did he, he didn't have a problem, obviously, with us upsoming this to a general business, right?
That was not part of any of our conversation.
Okay, sorry, Kristen, have we talked, has he reached out to us at all? The planning department, the owner?
No, not yet, he received a legal notice, but we haven't.
Okay, thank you.
And have, has the planning department reached out to him, up to the building owner?
Other, we haven't reached out to him other than sending a legal notice. We did reach out to Andy, who has to send us the email address. So we have that now, and we will be reaching out more, more formally than, or I guess the most formal is a legal notice, but informally to hopefully have him engage in the discussion.
I can't, I can't imagine that he'd want, he, he would have a problem with us wanting to do something like that, but.
So I mean, really with this, in the town center, you have so many different types of uses you can, that are afforded to you in this type of business and building. I mean, he's already had a convenience, the grocery store that's in this, which wouldn't typically be an IG, the Indian restaurant that exists. It's really just to make sure and hope for that we're not gonna see additional kind of more warehousing type space, but really more active uses along, along those, the front edge there.
Here's your distribution location.
Yeah. Well, see, that's a question, that's a good question, I mean, how does that, this look as distribution? So.
A question, does the owner of that building also own the other buildings across the parking lot? Or is those different owners?
To the best of my knowledge, they're all different owners.
Okay, so, so it's not likely that the group of owners would get together and make it some kind of pedestrian retail mall kind of? I mean, it looks like an industrial parking lot right now. Would changing the zoning make it easier for them to work together on something more attractive? Or is that, that not possible?
So as you guys all know, I mean, when you're looking at regulatory changes, you're looking to encourage people to move in the right direction that we're looking for. So, you know, but we're reaching out to the property owner, we've reached out to the property owner for other reasons that own the Pattersons and that plaza. So if we can continue bringing people together and having the right dialogue and have an understanding of the uses that we're looking for, and actually the uses that can increase the value of their properties, then, you know, all of that's possible.
The scenario that you just posed, you can see a start of that type of, of atmosphere occurring with, with this building here at 207, but as well with the building to its left, the Patterson and the Burlington Colcutts building, as well as the building directly behind the Burlington Colcutts Center with some of the smaller tenants bases that have been occupying there in, for the last couple of years. You can see that little group community trying to net together and have that type of, of atmosphere. But I think the rezoning of this may push the owner of 207 maybe to dress up that storefront a little bit and make it a little bit more inviting as to less industrial atmosphere.
Okay, that sounds great. I do think you, it's really important that we talk to them before we rezone his property.
Yep, of course.
Are there any, this is Sally, are there any other businesses in that building where the auto supply is? Or was that just a storage and distribution at the back and retail up front?
So Sally, up to that point where you see the wooden ramp going to that, to the stairway behind the telephone pole, that is, that was all retail and distribution for the auto supply center. Directly behind that stairway, you now have the new Hello Brother Grocery Store. And then adjacent to that, you have a restaurant. And if I'm not mistaken, down at the very end, we have a martial arts studio.
The restaurant is a very good restaurant, too.
Well, see, they all need signs, don't they, since I had no idea?
Sally, Sally, there is a sign, it's the truck that's parked in the front, but that's, that's in one of our finest definitions.
And Sally, that's gotta be, that's gotta be defined in our bylaw about using vehicles as freestanding signs.
It is.
Yeah.
Well, we've.
And we just have to regulate it.
Hi, this is Barbara, it's not the only place where it's happening.
No, you're absolutely right, Barbara.
Cookie Monster has been, has had their truck parked that way in front, on Mall Road for months.
But we gave them a permission, I think, if I'm not mistaken, to allow them to be there temporarily during our COVID situation.
Cookie Monster?
We did.
So.
Oh, who did?
But allow the food truck, oh, maybe. I know in the, outside of COVID, they have a provision not to park the truck. But for COVID, they might be able to do the food truck business.
I wasn't aware that they have that. I don't, I really, now that the businesses are open in there, I think it should not be sideways, it's taking up a lot of spaces.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I just wanted to point out that, that the Indian restaurant at the back end of that building is probably the premier Indian restaurant in the town. And if you go there between 5 o'clock and 9 o'clock at night, it's always jammed with people. So we're not talking about an inconsider, irrelevant business. It really is something that could, could help really diversify the downtown area if it was more prominently displayed.
It's also, this is Kathy, it's also very, very busy at lunchtime.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, it's just jam-packed. And I'd gone there, and my friend knows the woman who started that business, which started as a catering business. And part of the reason it might be located where it is is because of the rent and giving it a more prominent space when they're already maxing out on clientele. I'm not sure why they would want to pay a higher rent, so I'm sure there's something there that would have to be balanced.
Yep.
Well, the story of the town center, at least as long as I've been on it since 2003 or '04, is how do we keep the mom and pops and the businesses that are there, but also improve the walkability and the experience in the town center? You know, because I'm like, oh, we want to look just, look so nice and have this beautiful building, but we also don't want to kick out any mom and pop. So it's, it's a, it's a careful balance that I think we've seen over the years to try to upgrade, but also keep people that are real community members.
Right, and, and how do you know they're back there if they don't, if there's no, no sign? I, I had no idea there was a grocery here, so that's awesome.
Yeah, well, and the whole point is just to encourage more of that type of business and try to work with the property owner to, you know, not just re-sign some sort of kind of industrial retail kind of tenant, so.
Okay, so no one is objecting to this, correct?
No.
Okay, all right, so let's move on.
Okay, so moving on is the petition to amend the zoning bylaw definitions and use regulations as well as dimensional, Article 5 dimensional and Article 10 miscellaneous and special regulations as they pertain to solar arrays. So with that, I'm gonna kick it to Mr. Yared.
Hey, hey, I love being asked.
Been patiently with us.
Should I open with a joke? I mean, it may backfire, but, you know, never mind.
No, of course, well, if it's.
Oh, I got a quick one for you. These two cowboys are stranded in the desert, they're walking through and just suffering badly, and they see a tree off in the distance. And as they get closer to the tree, because where there's a tree, there has to be water. One of them says to the other, smell bacon. And he runs, runs to the tree, and the other cowboy, stop, stop, don't do it. And as the first cowboy approaches the tree, he is immediately gunned down. See, it wasn't a bacon tree, it was a hambush. Hey, it was clean. Trust me, kids are gonna love that one. It's a business. A while back, well, first of all, we're a Burlington-based solar installer and service company. We've been in town for about nine years, I think. And we recently got a customer, Francis Gruder on Margaret Street, that wanted to incorporate solar arrays to his property. Now, due to the vagaries of his specific property and the, and the outline of the house and the way the property, the way the ground is all set up, ground-mounted array made the only sense for him going forward for this. However, this is specifically forbidden in the zoning bylaws. And what we wanted to do was sort of just, just allow for due process to sort of go forward here. There's no, there's no reason why it shouldn't be, sort of take in all the mitigating circumstances that outline the specific property, to have a blanket restriction, we thought was really kind of an unfair thing to do to the homeowner in particular. And in this case, it just, if you look at the property, it's just sort of, it would not have any adverse effect on the neighborhood whatsoever. However, it's expressly forbidden, so that's kind of why we're here. We just want to allow for the opportunity for the homeowner to be able to go in front of a board for a special permit and plead his case.
Hi, this is Barbara, I have a question. As you know, our bylaws are written for the entire town. And it's very difficult for us to change a bylaw that affects the entire town unless there was a benefit to the entire town. So what would you say is the benefit of this change to the entire town? Not just specifically to this one homeowner?
Well, let's start with the beginning. Solar is enormously popular, and it's gonna be, Massachusetts is a very pro-solar state, as you could imagine. Aware of the opinion that everybody's gonna have solar eventually anyway, but we're maybe, you know, wishful thinking. The idea is that it's, it's one of those things where as you restrict access or availability of particular styles or opportunities for ways to, to access solar power, it sort of just makes it tougher for people to justify the cost that they're going into it. For example, the tracker system that we want, that we're talking about here is something that would generate, what was it, Brian, you know, boy, was it like 70, 80% of the power that he's gonna be utilizing, whereas a rooftop solar system would have to be almost twice the size because of the way it's faced. Trackers face the sun. The rooftop will be faced whatever direction it becomes.
In this case, their, their, their roof is not viable and would produce a drop in the bucket and be disruptive to how their house is set up in terms of how the, the shape of the roof and such. And then it's the way that the hill rises behind the house where would be the southern facing area, it's in mostly full shade. So the area, okay.
I completely understand why it's a benefit to this particular homeowner. My concern is this. While this property is extremely unique, and I understand that having solar in the, technically, what is the front yard, would not be offensive to anyone because they don't really have anyone there.
Sure.
What I have to be worried about is the rest of the town. And if we change this bylaw, it would allow people that live in very traditional neighborhoods, like the one I live in, to put ground-mounted solar in my front yard. And I have to say, I think most of my neighbors would not like that very much. We have, we did have meetings about this when we, when we put this bylaw into place. And we even had some neighbors that thought we shouldn't allow it inside yards. But we tried to be as flexible as possible because we, we love solar too, and we want to encourage people to use solar as much as possible. But this is a very unique property. And I don't, I don't see what the benefit is to the entire town to change in the bylaw. I definitely clearly see the benefit to your, to your customer. And I understand why they want to do it that way. But this bylaw change does not affect one property.
I, I fully, I fully understand that, and actually how a lot of these towns in the, I live in Beverly, and there was a prime example, and many of the unfortunate prime examples of why towns have followed suit with these type of laws is just because of what you said. There was a, you know, cul-de-sac neighborhood, you know, wide open, very visible, everyone was close neighbors, and they put a tracker in literally their front yard by the street. And we fully are not intending for that, for rewrite bylaws for this type of reason. I think what, what we're really asking is that, like Lou pointed out, due process. And this is what I would equate to like a mandatory minimum type of punishment, right? So if you do such X, there's no discretion for the judge, right? In this case, there's no discretion for your planning board. So the planning board can't look at any. So the planning board can't look at any particular circumstance for not just this homeowner, but any homeowner that are, you know, taxpaying citizens in Burlington and be able to make a discretionary choice, be it yes or no. So what we're just asking is not, not to, not to lose what you guys have as bylaws, but just to allow for some discretion so that you can look at a particular circumstance that some, a resident could petition um, any bylaw um, that has a, a blanket statement and that the planning board and zoning board could um, make a decision uh, based on those facts.
This is Kathy Byer. I, I'm sorry, can I, I want to do a springboard off of you Barbara. And that is based on what Brian just said. What is the cost to the town? If we open things up so that everyone else can uh, take it to court and challenge every bylaw?
I, I see that the planning board is still, has the same mission that it always has had, to protect the integrity of the town. And whatever that happens to mean, these are elected officials, they're accountable to the constituents to protect the town. There's nothing that's really going to change about that, other than allowing the planning board to recognize something that is, well, well, we look at it as a travesty of justice, but it's not really the case. It's, it's looking at something that's not, was not an intended side, not an intended effect of the blanket restriction. The blanket restriction was designed to do exactly what Brian suggested. Stop people from putting Ferris wheels in their front yard. But where it makes sense and where it makes sense for the homeowner, where it makes sense for the town should at least be optional. And it should at least have the, the ability for someone to go in front of a board and get a, I'm sorry, we don't agree with you. We don't think it should go there. And that way, due process has been served. Is there, is there a negative to that? Perfectly, you see?
So can I pause for a second? So Brian, can you, um, can you introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm uh Brian Sadler, Vice President at Revolution Solar in Burlington.
Okay, thank you. And then can either one of you, so you have amendments. And I apologize, I have a typo to the very first one, but it's two twenty-one, two, and then five one three three in the density schedule. And then in Article Ten, can you go through those a little bit before we get into this, just in terms of what we're actually looking for, for the amendment?
Uh, sure. Hold on a sec.
I think I, I have the three of them up here.
There you go. I got them. Uh, well.
We're just allowing for the special permit process, I believe.
Yeah, all we did was uh, I just went through the specific sections where that, where ground mounted was specifically forbidden. And wanted to just allow, insert language that will allow it to follow a review.
So the first one is the sec, Article Two, which is definitions. The definition of the use of structure accessory is where you wanted to add ground mounted solar arrays are not considered accessory structures in this context, but must receive a special permit as outlined in nine two O to assure compliance with other requirements in ten-nine.
Yeah, maybe this is an interpretation. The way I read the bylaw was that if it was an accessory structure, your hands are tied.
Um. Okay, let me just go through them. And then, because so that's, that's an, an, a den, anendum or an add to the definition of use of access, use of a structure accessory. And then the other one in the dimensional regulation area in Article Five is R O districts talking again about accessory uses um, within the front or side yards um, and a, uh, in terms of the buffer issue other than off-street parking. And then to the same sentence added to the end of that. And then again, so then the last piece in Article ten-nine-zero, which specifically deals with the zolar, solar component um, and the ground mounted solar energy system in a, in and all positions shall adhere to setbacks prohibited and are prohibited from the front yard of the subject property, which that provision um, in ten-nine-one-C is the provision that specifically gets at um, the prohibition from the front yard setback. The other two are ish, are dealing with accessory structures in general and not solar. So I guess, you know, I wanted to see what happened at this meeting, but I have a little bit of concern having a sentence to a specific use at the end of such a broad category of accessory structures and uses. So that's just.
That's a question you don't believe.
But the, in terms of the ten-nine, I, I think it's completely, if you want to talk about the front yard prohibition now being by special permit option, I think that's really the meat on the bone as to what you're talking about here. And the other pieces are maybe you need to put it there or not. We can talk through that. But I guess that piece is, so you're asking for ground mounted solar not be prohibited, but be by special permit, go through a special permit process with the planning board? I mean, whether it says that exactly or not, is that what you're looking for?
That's the intent, yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to throw that on the table before we got into the whole thing. We're all on the same page.
Thank you.
Kristin, Kristin, this is Betsy. Um, I, I have a comment kind of from a ZBRC perspective. On, under two, uh, two, which is the definitions, um, what is here is not a definition. It's actually getting kind of a regulation. So when you get into definitions, it should not regulate, it should just define. So just a comment to you guys that I think, and we can work with you on ZBRC on that, but that should get only to definitions you, and what you're, when you get to the regulation, that's really in your ten point nine.
So the idea that an accessory is a pretty broadly defined category, accepting a specific aspect of a mechanical device from being considered an accessory is not something that should be in the definitions phase?
Looking at a specific use, I think you'd want to try to outline whatever about that specific use in Article Ten. So if, so that, that's all in terms of, uh, to Betsy's point, if it's a definition, it's a definition, like you'd look it up in the dictionary. It's what it is. It's not a regulation plus a definition. And then in Article Five, it's a dimension, if there's going to be an exception to some part of five, we should probably get at that use in ten. Just to, in terms of the mechanism and administration of how to do this. So that, that's why I wanted to focus this discussion mostly on the Article Ten Amendment, because really what you're looking for is if you don't want a prohibition of front yard, whether or not you need to do something else with accessory, then it's, instead of prohibited, it's by special permit. That's, as I said, that's kind of the meat of the discussion. And that's where I think we should focus today is kind of the opening or beginning of this, of the discussion.
I guess, this is Monty Pearson. Can I ask a question?
Wait.
Who, who, who else is there? Go ahead.
This is Sherry. I just wanted Kristin to explain, or Barbara or both, explain to everybody the process of a special permit and what is allowed to be done in a special permit and how many people need to vote on that special permit, just so that everybody is on the same page as to, to what they're asking for as a special permit.
Good point.
I think that would be helpful.
Kristin.
Um, so a special permit um, can for all, all uses. Um, in Article nine point two point zero, a special permit can be applied for. It needs to meet a special permit criteria, which I will read to you in a second when I get it up. Um, but it also requires a um, super majority of the planning board, so five out of seven votes to approve it. Um, but it would just be with the planning board to approve. It would be discretionary with the planning board to approve that use. And give me one second in terms of the criteria. Special permit criteria is as follows. So a special permit criteria for approval, special permits maybe shall be granted by the planning board unless otherwise specified upon determination that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh the beneficial impacts to the town and the neighborhood uh, in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal and proposal in relation to that site, in addition to any specific factors that may be set forth in the zoning bylaw. The determination shall include consideration of the following. Social, economic, or community needs that are served by the proposal, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, adequacy of utilities and other public services, neighborhood character and social structures, impact on the natural environment, and potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. So that, those are the questions that the planning board needs to ask when looking at a special permit proposal.
Could I, could I then make a comment? This is Monty Pearson. Uh, my sense, and I like to have a lot of the planning board members uh, jump in if this is wrong, but my sense is, is that in um, in general, when you come down to these special permit processes, the person who has a particular situation can demonstrate a great deal of harm to themselves if they don't get to do what they are asking, what they're asking for. And, and frequently, the reasons for not doing uh, the special permit are a little vague in the sense that they cause a deterioration in the aesthetic of the neighborhood. Or they disturb the peace and quiet of the neighborhood, or other things like that, that and that, uh, what happens is that the opponents of the special permit are unable to enumerate a, a specific harm to the town or to the neighborhood. Whereas the person that wants something to have happened can say, well, I won't be able to do this. And so there ends up being a bias towards granting special, special permits is the way that I perceive how it works. And, and if we were to make this a special permit issue, I would really undermine the will of the town for putting in a prohibition against it. Because if you create a special permit process for front, for um, uh, solar devices in the front yard and most of the time when people apply, they get to have one. That's totally against the idea that we don't want them in the front yards because of the aesthetic of the town. So I'm just, I'm in favor of solar power, but I guess I'm against, against opening up a special permit process where for the special unique me, reason that each person will have each time they come in will counterbalance any general idea that we don't want to have all these solar panels in the front yards in town. Um, and that becomes kind of vague when it gets to any one particular situation. So I think that town meeting at least is going to be very um, unlikely to support something like this because it goes totally against the kind of the will of what people felt, which is they didn't want a bunch of solar things in their front yards.
I, we fully understand, and I, I think these were, in my opinion, they'd be extreme outliers that um, a unique property could even have them in their front yard and be even heard or understood to be credible to apply for a special permit. It would be, you know, well-protected properties that the houses towards the very back of the property. And, or something like this. In, in this case, the, the customer's front yard doesn't even meet the town's definition of front yard. So, um.
I can, I understand.
I know that's not on the topic for today, you know?
Um, and I know we don't need to get into every little detail tonight because that's not the purpose of the meeting, but um, I do think, I understand what you're, what you're saying and what you're envisioning.
Yep.
But that doesn't mean that people will not come before us with completely outrageous requests that we are then put in a position that we have to find a way to deny it. And if we deny it, that does not stop them from suing us, which costs us and the town a lot of time and money. Um, you also have the problem of people, you know, coming to us and saying, oh, but my neighbors all think it's great. My neighbors don't mind. And that puts pressure on us when the fact of the matter is, maybe the neighbors are feeling pressured. Or maybe the neighbors are going to move next year and someone else is going to move in and they're stuck with it. It, there's a number, every time I think about this, I can, I think of another way this could go south. I'm, I'm sorry, because I do understand the need of this particular homeowner. And if there was some way to do this through the Board of Appeals or something like that, I would not object, but I understand there's no way to do it that way. But I am very apprehensive about changing the bylaw for the entire town, really just to suit one property owner.
Well, there's only one that we know about. That's.
Well, this is just, we're the only ones that have taken up this case. And this is how it was presented to us. It was the only path. We had been going through this, I mean, this uh, for the better part of a year now. So um, the path was, this was the path. And um, as presented to us, that we would need to um, petition uh, changing the bylaw in order for not only this, this one particular resident, um, but any resident that had a special circumstance that would be credible to, to, to petition for a special permit in the future. I think that we all are, we all are in agreement that, you know, um, sheds, um, ground mounted solar system, as Lou pointed out, Ferris wheels and, and, and extreme things should, don't belong in the front, in the, the definition of front yard. And we fully understand um, what you guys are doing and what the town voted for. We, we fully are, understand and, and support that. We think that is, we're just asking that, that for, on the behalf of the residents of Burlington, that there could be a due process that's fair that in the event that they have a credible situation to petition for a special permit, they would have a path to that.
I understand. And, and it's certainly your right and your client's right to pursue this bylaw change. I just um, want you to understand. And again, we're probably going a little further in depth than we should tonight anyway, because we have to have the same conversation when we go to the planning board. But I think you're going to need to demonstrate, at least for this planning board member to get on board, is you would have to find some way to demonstrate how this benefits the town. And right now, all I've heard is how it benefits this one homeowner.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that this gives the opportunity for other members of the town to have, to have a due process and, and a and incredible path to petition there for a special permit.
And it's your, like I said, it's your right to pursue this and move it forward. And we probably are going to end up having the same conversation again when you come. So we should probably not go too deep. Um, is there anyone else that wants to jump in on this?
And we appreciate your, your feedback in this. You know, we didn't know really what we were getting into uh, for today specifically. So this is, you know, educational for us as well to understand the process and, and really the, the feedback of uh, all the boards and, and members, as well as, you know, what the, what the town has already spoken on. So this is, thank you for letting us be a part of the process.
Of course. Thank you. Um.
We've been here for a while. We know what the characters like. We know it's, it's, it's.
So are there any other people from any of the other boards that want to weigh in on this?
Barbara, is this on our agenda for next meeting? Do you know?
Uh, I don't have the agenda in front of me. I think it is.
It is. The planning board, yes.
The twentieth, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think overall, and I, and what I think you can help us understand is, I mean, obviously, I think you've heard all of us say that we're very pro solar. Um, it's, it's really the solar in the front yard issue that we're tackling with it. I think you're hearing the, the negative um, kind of feeling. So I mean, as much as you can help us understand the different um, ways in which we can incorporate solar into the built environment in ways that we would support. I mean, we want to learn from you through this process as much as you're learning from us as to how to um, do, kind of format the regulatory process. But you know, I, I, all of us, I think, want to try to.
How does it benefit the whole town? Is, is a valid, valid point. How does it benefit the whole town to do this? I think it's a very valid point. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, and we, we want to understand the industry. It's a, technology's evolving all around us. So you know, what can we do to kind of educate other, not just the people on this, this call or the planning board, but others as to, you know, what's out there in terms of what you're offering, whether it's, it, and something ends up on Margaret Street or not, like what else is it that you're involved with that we should know about?
Um, connected to, um, for a follow-up is uh, given the role of ZBRC, um, I think uh, it would be good if you guys, um, if you're going to move this forward, I think we need to do some work on the wording for this and uh, what sections you actually want to actually propose. Um, as we mentioned before, maybe section five, you don't need to do it all. Um, section two probably needs to be a definition and not a regulation and focusing on.
Section 2 probably needs to be a definition and not a regulation and focusing on 10. But if you, you know, by coming to one of our meetings, we can help you smooth that language, which, if you're going to move it forward.
Very helpful, thank you.
And I think that to, to respond to what Kristen just pointed out as well is that this is still relatively a new, right, new to a lot of us. It's not that everyone has, has solar. It's, you know, similar to a hundred years ago, someone probably parking a car and their, you know, and the driveways probably didn't exist and someone wanted to put a driveway in and people lost their minds. But this is a relatively emerging technology and it's still new. And to some folks, it's aesthetically beautiful and progressive and other folks, it's not. So we, we fully, we fully get that. And we, yeah, we look forward to, to having more conversations about the, the process and happy to, to share our experiences in, you know, in, across the state and the region as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to see you on August 20th, correct?
You are.
Yeah.
All right, can I add, can I add one thing this, before we depart? Gentlemen, if I'm not mistaken, the pole of which the solar array is attached to is in excess of about 25 feet. Understand too, that our accessory uses or accessory structures can only be 20 feet. So make sure you also get your heights and sizing of these solar arrays involved with the conversation when you talk to the zoning bylaw review committee too, please.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I did notice, I think it's at 15.
I'm sorry, Brian?
It's at 15 feet is what the?
I think I'm, I remember the plans as being at 25.
Oh, the, the, the width and the height at its maximum, it's, it's a moving object is, is, the maximum height is 20 feet if we, unless we set it further into the ground.
All right, but that's got to be, the height of it is also, should be discussed when you present your, when you have a presentation with the zoning bylaw review committee, please.
Absolutely, thank you very much for pointing that out.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions before we wrap up? Or any, any thoughts on any of the other things you talked about tonight before we wrap up?
Kristen, this is Shari, I have a couple comments.
Yep, go right ahead.
Wanted to, just to say to Louis and Brian that the next ZBRC meeting is on, I believe, September 9th, I can certainly confirm that with you. That's one comment. And my second comment would be, in addition to what Andy just mentioned, the other thing that I need to learn about solar and specifically as to our town's rules or solar is intended on a residential use, from what I understand, and not to make a profit is to really just use the solar for your own purposes. So not knowing a lot about solar and knowing that you have a use that you can put solar on your roof and you're saying that the roof is not appropriate, why is it not appropriate? Can they not get enough solar for their particular use? So some thoughts about that I want to hear more about as well too, is why the existing use that we have in town is not viable for this property?
We actually, we, the planning board meeting, the last time we, we went into that kind of detail, I don't want to go into that detail here, but there are, there are mitigating reasons why this particular.
Okay.
But just theoretically, if you're facing the array exactly south, you're getting the most out of it. And if you have something that follows the sun, your X, your, your, your efficiency is off the charts. It just takes up a lot less space and gets a lot more power if you have a system that follows the sun. That's kind of the, 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 the answer to that question.
Takes up a lot more space as well.
Understanding that, how much power does the house need?
A considerable, very considerable amount, but their, their roof would be, we would consider not viable. So it would be if, if, if homeowner X called in and asked that they would like to go solar on the property, we consult with them. We have tools to work off of satellite imagery and a variety of measurement tools that we diagnose the roof, the property for the viability of going solar or looking at solar. And in their case, we would consider the roof not viable. Fortunately, they have a good amount of space in the way that their property sets up. This is why this was the proposed solution and what the, what the homeowner actually inquired about wanting to do, knowing that their roof was not, had a good path. Basically, there's, there's three things that are going to dictate how solar's going to work. It's your orientation to southern exposure, your shading or lack thereof. And then basically roof space or how many panels can you fit to compare to what your, your energy bill is or, or what your goals are. And in this case, they have a substantial energy bill and they couldn't put many panels in a place that would be viable on their roof.
Brian, if I could add that when you do present to both the planning board and to the zoning board of zoning bylaw review committee, if you could bring photos of, of, from ground level of the trees or the vegetative growth that's around the perimeter of the house, which obstructs your, your direct, uh, direction of the sun. And then if I'm, memory serves me on the, on the house itself, we have some gables on the front, so that your explanation to, to people of trying to get enough panels on the roof, where you're having to deal with the configuration or the shape of the roof itself and your explanation of, of saying, well, you would have to put X amount of panels on the roof to get an equivalent power source as you would from a solar freestanding, solar pan, freestanding solar unit. You wouldn't get that because of the, the configuration, the roof wouldn't allow you to have that many panels on it because of the architecture or the, or the dormers that are on the roof itself.
Absolutely.
That way, that way, that way they can see exactly what it is that you just talked about.
Okay, no problem.
Add to that, any outbuildings, as I recall seeing the property, you have the house, but then there are some other garages or outbuildings as well.
Correct. It is a, it's a gambrel roof with a variety of dormers and, and we're strange or unique symmetry, I'll say. And so solar panels are rectangles and it doesn't always work out on every type of roof.
So pictures would be great.
Absolutely, I, I made some notes here about, just about that, for sure.
Something else, just this is not, this has nothing to do with the residential thing. And what we're getting a lot of interest in lately is in the commercial side, is people wanting to put canopies to cover up their vehicles and put solar panels on top of the canopies. And these are freestanding structures. This, that has nothing to do with anything that we're discussing here, but this, the people are starting to get creative about the use of space and how to maximize the effectiveness of their open area in order to be able to cut back in their fossil fuels.
It is interesting and fun to hear about these creative solutions, but I, I hesitate, I'm hearing everybody talking about the particulars of this roof and the particulars of these gables. That is, I'm sorry, but it, it bears no, it has no impact whatsoever on my decision because that's one property. I'm looking for how this is going to affect all the properties in town. So it's fine if people want to hear about the gables, it's not going to change my mind. I'm sorry.
Understood.
Got it. Anything else?
Not, not for me.
I, I thank you very much for your time. I look forward to the next, next time we all meet together.
Thank you, and I'm sorry if I came across as negative, we're very supportive of solar. I have to think about how this impacts the, the rest of the residents in town.
I'm sorry if my joke was bad.
No, no.
Oh, don't tell him it was good, he'll tell another one.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Okay, guys, thanks so much.
Thanks so much.
Great meeting.
See you next week, thank you.
Any other questions that you want to think about, just feel free to email me.
Thank you for doing this.
Okay, thank you, guys, we'll catch up.
Message to adjourn.
Message to adjourn all land use and planning board and zoning bylaw review.